We're live, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. I call this a special city council meeting to order. Today is November eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, and it's seven oh five P M. Would the administrative officer call the rules, please? Because we don't have the clerk today.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna start off with roll call. Councilman Hassan.
Present.
Councilman Assemadi.
Yes, present.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Sadman.
Present.
Councilman Moussa.
Present.
Councilman Faiz not here. Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its edge in the world.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any community announcements?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. So basically, this special city council meeting was called by some city council members to discuss some issues. And it looks like we don't have any items for new business, but we'll have a closed session to discuss some topics. Before we get there, before we get there, do we have any proclamations or recognitions today? None? Any additions to the agenda or deletions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like to add the resolution, discussion about the city business.
Discussion about city business?
Yeah. City-related business.
I mean, anything in particular?
Especially with the election.
Okay.
I think that if we could do, if we're gonna add something, can we do it after a closed session? That way, we could have a legal occasions and because we have an attorney who's here to meet with us and he has a timeline.
Mister, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
But the, the still, Hyan, I call for city business. The, the public comment could be the city-related, any business, somebody has some problem, whatever.
The comments first.
Yeah, yeah. If they could have a discussion for the what they heard about what, so it is not the like a specific nothing for election.
If we're gonna make, I'm just saying, if we're making an agenda item, if we could do the closed session, we could go up to the conference room and then come right back down.
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying city business. Anybody can discuss anything. I have something to discuss about my bill. So that's all. It's the discussion, nothing else.
All right. So with that, no other additions to the agenda?
I think, Mister Attorney, even though I, I add the, the discussion, we have to go through the vote or amend the, yeah.
Somebody has to second.
Somebody has to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we need a motion to approve the new amended agenda.
I'd like to make the motion, the resolution and agenda as amended.
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we move to the new round of public comment.
First and foremost, if you guys want sheets, they're out there for public comment.
All right, so that's the first round of public comments, what I meant.
All right, with that, Ibrahim Elghaim.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, Chief or Deputy Chief or Lieutenant and Assistant City Manager. I have a few things to talk about. Let's start with the City Clerk, Rana Faraj. Two TikTok videos, and everyone's seen them. A punching bag with Councilman Mahid's picture on it in her office that's never heard of in any, any city in America. For the past three to four years, there have been corruption in, in the City Clerk's office, and I can testify to that. There was words by the City Clerk and the former City Manager against Councilman Mohammed Hassan and how they're gonna take him down and how he put the majority Muslim council and how he did this and how he did that. Personal attack on Councilman Mohammed Hassan, and I'm a witness to that. Also, we talked about, last month, I mentioned something about the Police Oversight Committee. Till now, you guys haven't done nothing, Mayor and Council. We need a Citizens Oversight Committee for the Police Department. Lastly, I would like to congratulate all the winners of November fourth election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we got. Manadah Hamid, Hamid, got it?
Hey, good afternoon, how is everybody?
Good afternoon.
I just wanna say that I, I have this kind of issue with people be coming to a building by my house and, well, one of the issues, which is a guy came with his son, he's not even twelve years old, you know, just he driving, he hit the fence by, by my house and he just drove like nothing without reporting anything. Also, second comment, which is people be coming from out of state. They under age, you know, driving, speeding forty to fifty, and we have proof, evidence, and also I have proof of the guy that who hit the fence also. And, and also, there's a lot of people, they get excited when they come for, to this place, which is they have a wedding, and they all, they only leave a mess when they leave because they came for. And many times, I had, I had report to the cops and they came and they're my witness. And, you know, I have, I, I try slow down, you know, much I can, but it didn't nothing work. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, he said he made reports with the police, so we just want the police to follow up with them, please.
Is it the Overbridge area? Yeah, okay. I know me personally, we do do a lot of enforcement over there with traffic in the Overbrook area because we, we do get a lot of speeders coming into the city, so we will look into that.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ali Hamid.
Salaam alaikum, wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
Alaykum salaam.
I'm talking with the language of Arabic. One, I mean, translate, I mean, translate. I'm Ali Salah Hamid, Jawir. The Salah, Azal, the little, the little. I'm a murderer, by the way, I saw. I'm a murderer, from the inside and outside, I'm a murderer. Standing inside, they don't know what they're doing, outside, with the parking lot, what they're doing, I mean, from the inside and outside, and the cars, I'm a murderer. I broke the truck, I mean, from the, I mean, I parked the car and went, I mean, in the car, not inside the truck. And this is, I mean, I saw. I bought the house from the front, they go, the family, they bought Azal. How? More than eight years. Excuse me. Without, without, I mean, 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 anything. I bought it, and then I did it under some, I mean, organization, I mean, the middle line, and then I didn't work, I mean, with them, I turned it, I mean, how? For the sake of the, I mean, I'm a murderer, I'm a murderer. I did it, I mean, I mean, the night, day and night. I'm a murderer, I'm a murderer, and I'm a murderer, I mean, in the night, I'm a murderer. I'm a murderer. And you, Allah, I mean, I'm a murderer, I mean, I'm a murderer, I mean, I'm a murderer. I think that, I mean, I'm a murderer, I mean, I'm a murderer, I mean, I'm a murderer. The truck, I mean, I'm a murderer, from the front, I mean, they go. There are problems, I mean, between, between, they're not selling, I mean, the family. I don't check, I don't have Max. Max, I mean, I'm a murderer, I mean, with them, I mean, I'm a murderer, I mean, I'm a murderer, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm a murderer, I mean, I'm a murderer. I'm an person, I mean, I'm a murderer, I'm a murderer, I'm a murderer, I'm a murderer. I'm an person, I mean, I'm a, 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 I'm a murderer. I want to live, I mean, my life, I mean, without, I mean, I'm a murderer, 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 I mean, I'm a murderer. Until, I mean, they lock, I mean, the market, I mean, I'm a murderer, I mean, I'm a murderer. From the inside and outside, I mean, I'm a murderer. I'm a prisoner, I mean, from the group, I mean, they're raising, I mean, I mean, the price, I mean, I'm a murderer.
Shukran. So he's talking about the issue between Azal Hall and his house regarding the alley that people come during events and speed up in the back and they crush the fence and there's a lot of noise at night that he's complaining of. And he's talking about the mediation that happened when Max was here and I think I remember what happened at that time and both parties agreed about the suggestion that happened, that the fence should be closed in there, as I remember. Both sides agreed, so I don't know what happened. I think we just have to go back to the same solution that they both agreed on at that time. And they just have to implement what we agreed on. I think we suggested that there should be a fence to, to block the area. I don't remember the exact details, but both sides agreed at that time, so we just have to go back to that agreement and implement it. Otherwise, this is an alley, you know, the, the city can decide anything the city wants. We cannot, you know, at the end, it's, it's a public space that can be open all the way. But we accommodated both sides because it's not one of those widely used alleys in the city, so just for the safety of the kids and others, we agreed on the solution. So I think we should just go back to that solution that we agreed on and both sides have to, you know, abide by what we agreed on. We'll follow up with that, please.
Is there a specific time that this has occurred more? Because I don't recall any calls to that area lately during my time, from three A, three P M. to eleven P M.
It's mostly at night, I think, when the events take time, usually, you know, from evening up, six, seven o'clock up. And it usually, events don't take place every day. It could be once or twice a week. But we need to follow up with that solution because they both agreed on that and, and just try to re-implement that solution because both sides agreed on. I think that would be the safest way.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you so much. Next one.
Assem Hamid.
Salaam alaikum.
Salaam.
I'm Hamid. I'm a resident, I'm a resident, I'm a resident. We've agreed, and we've been, and we've been, 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 we've Then, I have to talk to Mayor Kethi Anga, Kethi Anga give me idea, create the pilot program.
I think he's trying to get here, I'm sorry, your time out, I need to ask another minute maybe.
Okay, may I have?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, who did the pilot program? And that pilot program, we need the four board, we didn't have it, three board, and then Mayor did it for us, and then we got the four board. Also, clarification again, when our mayor has the hearing in the Washington, that hearing very clear, and the mayor is right, mayor is true. I did not brought the resolution, he's right. Council members brought the resolution, and that council members did it. I don't have nothing to do, because it's their four board. And there is completely lie, if somebody say Bangladeshis, we have a four council member. I never said that. I love my Arab community, because my twenty years, I was... Mr. Mayor, may I have one more minute, please? So...
I don't know if we are allowed to have that.
A relationship with the Arab community before he came America. Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. One more? Okay, thank you.
Abdulaziz Jobah.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abdulaziz Jobah, long time resident in Ramallah. I was not gonna make a comment, but Mr. Hassan forced me to do that. When he said that, he didn't mention it, but that's his post right here.
Yeah, there is no Bangladeshi.
Yeah, clothed, who is coming as a mayor, I am not worried. Just let you know, four council vote is the power, very clear.
Yes.
So, I would like to ask you, because I'm resident here, what power mean to you?
I will explain here next time, when I can come, I cannot council.
So, in that case, I know the law is above everybody. And I think I am one of the one who vote for you to be sitting in that chair. As a matter of fact, I was elected official back in Tennessee. So, please, to the council members, everyone here, respect our community. We have so much going on, our name all over the news, everywhere about election, about the fraud, all that, please, that's, you hurt our reputation. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, anymore?
We're good to go.
Alright, thank you. So, I just wanna comment on what's going on. I think we all have a responsibility to bring the community together as elected officials. There is no Bengali, Yemeni, Polish, African-American, we're all one community. And we are, we were elected to serve everybody in this city, to serve everybody equally, without discrimination and without preferential treatment. And I trust that everybody knows this, and we have been working as a team. Yes, we had some disagreements in the past. If anybody committed a mistake, it does not represent the whole body here, it represent that person alone. I see a lot of disturbing comments on social media by some people, where they divide the community, us and you, and that's not acceptable. We tried to bring the community together from day one. I talk about myself personally, to the point where I brought the former mayor to serve under my administration, in an attempt to unite the community. And there's so many people are talking about lawsuits and lawsuits and accusing this body of corruption. But let's review, who filed lawsuits against the city so far, since I took the office at least? First one was about the pride flag. I mean, we know who did it, few people who belong to the former power structure. They were in the human relations, supported by other people. And to accuse us of causing the problem, that's not right, because we won the lawsuits at that. So, that proved that we were on the right side. We weren't wrong. The people who caused the city money are those people who filed the lawsuits and turned out to be wrong. That was the first one. Second one, that the city just won, is the marijuana dispensary lawsuit. How did it happen? It happened before, because the former clerk gave an authorization to that business to open their business before, one day before the city council hold the meeting to block any more dispensaries in the city. So, in an attempt to give that business a permission, that needed later on to be approved by the city council, but it wasn't, that business had a reason to sue the city, based on action of one person that belongs to the former administration, not us. Then, a few weeks ago, we won the lawsuit. So, that proved that they were wrong as well. These are two lawsuits that they were talking about, that we cause lawsuit to the city. In fact, we are winning those lawsuits, which prove that the people who are looking for trouble and filing those lawsuits are the ones who are causing the city to lose money and resources. And there are more lawsuits underway, who knows, maybe we are winning those lawsuits as well. And it's not acceptable to threaten the city that, you know, if you take administrative action against someone, right away they threaten you, you know, with filing lawsuits, that's not acceptable. You can go to any lawyer you want. In fact, I received a hundred fifty question in my deposition by this famous attorney that they are talking about. Too many of them are irrelevant to the case of the former city manager. It's a joke, how he's making noise on the media, but then copy and paste from other lawsuits. So many of those questions, he thinks we don't read them. So many of them, talking about car accident, doctor lawsuits, how many patients and stuff, irrelevant to the case, which means he was just copying and pasting, copy and paste. Very unprofessional, but they're making so much noise on the media. I'm someone who reads everything, so I read everything there, and I caught those mistakes. I was like, what, you think I have time, you know, to waste reading this nonsense? Copy and paste from other lawsuits, that's very unprofessional. And he expects to win those lawsuits. And there's still city employees who are threatening to go to that lawyer. So, just wanna make it clear that we are not gonna be blackmailed by anyone. We are not gonna, you know, give away the city resources to anyone. We are trying to do everything legally, and, you know, if... We will fight even for years to defend the city, to defend the taxpayer money, to save the city resources, we'll do everything it takes to do that. Even if my term expires in a few weeks, I'm willing to travel and come back to defend the city and attend depositions and attend courts and defend the people. You know, the people here, we are not gonna be taken for granted, you know, our resources, our tax money, we'll do everything to protect that and to save it. And we'll do everything to take legal actions, and we do everything based on research. Like, I always talk to the attorneys before, at the city manager, before we do everything. We don't take an individual's opinion when we take actions. Sometimes, it would be a mistake to just listen to one person. So, we decide as a group, as a team, after we take the legal opinion from the attorneys. And that's why we already won a few lawsuits so far, and I'm expecting that we're gonna win the next... There's one more, I think, left. The other one for the police chief is dropped already, so we done with that one. There's one more now, and we will fight it even for five, six, seven years, it doesn't matter how long it takes. And if anybody wants to sue, go ahead, we are here. As long as the residents are here, paying taxes, living in this city, and loving this city, we are, as elected officials, will take responsibility to defend the people and to try as much as we can to protect our resources. That's just on a statement that I wanna make. And I wanna thank everyone who came tonight. I think the next step now is just to... We have a close session, but before that, we have the second round of public comment, if we have anything.
So, you added a discussion about election. If we could go to the close session, we can come back and do that after, and then...
Okay. I add the city business, okay?
Oh, so you're done?
No, well, no, so, yeah, we have to go, go, yeah.
So, are we gonna do...
The close session?
If you guys wanna suspend the rules and remove that discussion at this point?
We can do a close session and come back and...
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so, do we need to move to...
It's better so that we don't have to get all the cameras to leave and all that, you just go up.
Yeah, let's go.
Do you need a motion for that?
Uh, you can just spend a lot.
Yeah, let's suspend the law to go discussion.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, that's because of the heavenly amendment. If you bought it forty years back, you know, they cannot go. Well, they can only go, uh, they cannot go over inflation rate.
I, I take as five percent.
No, two percent.
So you figure where one hour is here, so in one hour, you took a hundred seventy photos. So that's like.
Yeah, but I do expect to record now every Saturday and Sunday for Saturday, like, news show.
How do you choose the H P for the world?
Uh.
I would, I don't have time for this.
I check for it.
Is it mostly per city or outside?
It's about. I think it would be perfect for the topic. But this is, we're honestly, you know, people want us to like, hey, I should do a show about this. I have a.
Oh, you're still there. I was just at, uh, your birthday.
Unless it's a documentary. Do you have a study on?
She can sing.
Does he write something? The.
No, I took my sister. I have my sister.
It's a shame.
Even though she's married. We have this.
Okay, that's the little step.
But my sister did a lot of shows, you know, because I have a lot of memories.
And you know that the law. Even the lawyer.
It never used to be like that, but like. Robbed here, comments, people. They just, they don't wanna hear it, so they just come on the show whenever they're.
Yeah, he, he got it.
You got it, bro? So how do you store? Do you have a server?
Well, we post it on YouTube, but what's it posted?
We, you have a server to store. Uh, it's not, uh, one terabyte, basically. One terabyte.
They assure this person.
So there are four of them. Uh, it takes about a year to fill up this one terabyte. Uh, which is stuff. Since, uh, we do not have a budget for doing different projects and so on. So I'm just going some thousand dollars this second to document. So that's why we're conservative.
What are you gonna do? You're tired, Greg.
What, when I, this is why this is done in the line already. So this way, we'll have other individuals that can pick up on it. Now, I have a technician. There are a lot of services. We have three individuals who has worked on. Twenty-seven questions that I have.
That's, that's the judge.
Pretty good editing, just well, you know, so. So slowly, I want to bring this one. As we.
But that's twenty-seven.
He started to learn the project.
They, they failed for.
And then, once we.
Either would, if Adam do, Adam would.
Slowly, like, out of it.
It's not about Adam Wood, it's just that.
But, uh, it's, uh, it's probably, probably, it's, it's library, it's not. I'm not doing it for myself. It's all the library, all the services and so on. Makes sense.
How could you know that's like or not?
When I started out, I went. Too many nights where you just keep working and this kind of stuff. Sometimes you start doing the things that. By your time, it's three or four in the morning.
No, there's a suite, no, there's, there's a suite.
So if you, you do any, anything or not at all.
We do clip editing. We do three, three show, so we find like the best meaningful minute, minutes and a half. Something that somebody said, and we pull it out just to watch, like, people would be like, oh, you know what? The show, you know? Um, but that's the only editing that we do is clip editing.
And then you trash it?
A whole video or the, the clips?
Uh, no.
Actually, everything, we trash everything. As long as it's on social media, I trash everything.
So if YouTube loses your stuff.
We'll never see that video ever again in our lives. Goodbye, and I'm fine with it.
So if you need to do some historical stuff, where you do a collage of fifty or hundred other videos that were in the historical file.
See, I want to do that, I'm not gonna lie. That, that I would love to do, but. So for right now, YouTube, YouTube, you can ask him, you can download it.
Right, you can, right.
But, uh, obviously, you thought about it, and I wanna do that, I wanna show people how we came to. Maybe I will make my sister do that, because I can hear a lot of, just, uh, give us some contact, but I'm secretary now.
So I got, I'm gonna be bringing out, coming out, but I don't know how I'm gonna do it yet. So about twenty-two years ago, I went, walked around and drove around the city individually, and took photos of every business. Every storefront going through. Probably two thousand and three, two thousand and four. And I haven't showed anyone those photos in twenty-some years. And they were all storefronts of Chaminck back then.
Yeah.
I mean, you had a lot of good stores, you know?
It would be a nice historic country.
It'd be so nice, you know, just to put the pictures together and, and say, hey, look, this is Chaminck back in two thousand and four, you know? And I went and photoed every individual store, so, I mean, no one really did it in every store like I did.
Which, which streets did you go?
Every, every store, every store from, from Kona, uh, Caspia to Jos Campo, to Holbrook, to Kniff. I mean, I, I would park and walk up and take photo one, photo two of every individual store. Some, just, some just the buildings, it took me probably about a week or so. But it was, it was every building, so if the building had two storefronts in it.
Yeah.
But it'd be nice to present that coming up one day. It, it would draw the interest of the life, because, I mean, Chaminck, the memories, you know?
So, uh, on January first, two thousand, I drove down Kona, back and forth, and Kona, back and forth. And I just ran a video as I'm driving by.
Well, that's okay.
And so I had one of those as well.
Oh, great.
But it's not individual shots, it's just as you're driving.
Video, driving, yeah, yeah. So that's nice.
They're moving. So, uh, during one of the inaugurations, like, uh, maybe ten years later, after, maybe two, it was two ten or something. I played that before they started the program. And it surprised how many people, you know, were interested to watch.
You know, people love, I mean, I know I do, a lot of you. It is true, the memories, yeah, I mean, picture of people would have did that in Chaminck in the seventies where they, they went around, driving around, just recording everything. It would've been great, beautiful memories, yeah. Um, and, and I don't think a lot of people did that back then, but there are some clips here and there, but.
Well, not too many cameras.
Right, right.
In the sixties, uh, uh, I had like a small camera, a small thing with a one, a cartridge, you know, so. It, it cost seven bucks or something.
Just picture the videos from the sixties, that would be beautiful.
That, that was, that's how the pictures, you know, in those years. And yet, uh, inside, you had to put those bulbs in.
Oh.
Oh, this photography. My first digital.
What's up, G? Oh, uh, sure, yeah, yeah, sure, yeah.
Omar just wants the camera time.
Yeah, yeah, wait, 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 my first one here.
Omar, he just wants the camera time, wants to turn, wants to tilt it.
I'm gonna do that.
Greg will get you, Greg will get you the extreme pose up.
If you had some, uh, internet, uh, chance, we would have done a real close up for you.
Yeah, see that, yeah, I get it.
We should do a Q and A right now, over somebody. My wife is telling me, you can hear our whole conversation.
Who's in it?
No way.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, well, I thought I did over here, but that's not, I thought you could mute it from here, if you get the option.
Watch out, you know, like.
Like, give me the option to mute the. I have you.
So, what did you, when did you have a chance to put the fire stuff on the agenda?
For what?
For today's.
What fire stuff?
Oh, I thought you had somewhere.
No, no, that's just some, I think, someone, someone wrote. Took, uh, twenty-some photos already. Is that D seventy or D ninety?
Do you like them? Thank you.
Thirty-five cents? What'd you wanna get?
Oh, I get my first pair. I opened my other pair in my last pair. I put it on the other day. Ten years.
Why, it was, it was fire, dear.
No glasses.
Can't see anything.
I don't have a single dollar.
We trying to get candy?
Do we either see the smoke, or you see the, or you see the flames?
What candy did you buy? You didn't get a Leo? Oh, look, see, he had it on. Good man, Leo. So go get the candy now, tell Dad he'll hold the camera for me, you go get the candy. There should be, yeah, yeah, there's a. Yeah, big, so they got big bag of the candies.
Are we talking about here? Older you? It used to be thirty-two were max, but they changed the multiplier with just. I've reached down. Cause it's thirty-two years. I think I figured out yesterday, like, it's sixty-five percent.
So is it only police that gets, uh, four bad twenty-five years?
They don't.
They don't?
No one does anymore, it used, it used to be, the pension was half paid in twenty years. Then they would all retire, and it changed where they went from the city pension, because the mayor used all the money from APAs to make up the pension system. So, somehow, they have nothing to pay. They shifted over to MERS, and then the MERS pension system was, you know, what I got hired under. And then they shifted it, uh, reverse to the hybrid system, if you guys think.
So, their hybrid system, how different is it from the regular system?
They have, it's half of this, defined contribution, half is defined benefit, so they have one point, thanks, one point seven five multiplier for a year service. And then they have like a four O one K, so they want to.
Yes, okay, because on the old system, it's a two or two percent.
We're at two point four, two percent, I was at two point five one. It's all bridge down, so, but there, there's, there's benefits, there's, there's pluses and minuses, most systems, it's like, I can leave. I can maybe at twenty-five years old, you know, and collect, but they can't, I think, until they're sixteen. Or they can't collect until they're sixteen. But they're vested earlier than we are at our age, so there's a lot of difference.
Did they change the vesting from ten to five years, or?
I believe it's five years, so they have to do that. It's different, I mean, it's, it's a different, it's a different system. It reduces, it reduces the longer that, I would say, eventually, it'll even out, they, they could do a couple of minor tweaks to it, maybe.
But make sure, uh, the city starts contributing from their part, right? So the only thing is, if you quit before you're vested, the contribution the city made does not follow. It stays within the city.
No, yes, you only give.
What you pay. And then after ten years, you get what you pay, and what the city.
Are we back live?
Yeah, we, we, I, I.
Oh, oh, we're still, okay. All right, so, do we need a motion to end the closed session, or?
Motion to close session?
Second.
All right, and all in favor of that? All right, actually.
Eight twenty-seven.
Yeah, there is nothing to vote on, nothing to discuss after that, and I guess we can just move to adjourn.
Uh, if you want, you can do your, um, your reports.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't know about.
Oh, yeah, the reports are not here, the report we're supposed to be before, okay.
Right.
Well, nothing much to say, I mean, you have been waiting for too long, I don't wanna keep you any longer, but, uh, um, I mean, I just wanna take, uh, this opportunity to, uh, thank you all for coming tonight to join this meeting. And to congratulate all those who won the election. Uh, we should have a second round of, uh, comments, that would be after the reports.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, I wanna congratulate all the winners, and, uh, uh, I don't know what's the next step, uh, some people may not be, um, like, content with the results, and they may need to proceed, uh, with taking actions, but, uh, either way, I congratulate everyone who won this election and, uh, thank all those who run for a public office, but they, uh, didn't have, or they couldn't make it. But we thank them for having the courage and the passion to serve the community, and we hope that, uh, they will continue, uh, and they may make it in the next round. Uh, we have difficulty finding, uh, people to run for public offices, it's not that easy in our community, because, as you know, it's almost a volunteer position to run for a public office here, whether it's the mayor or the city council, so we appreciate everyone who, uh, you know, put himself in the front line to serve the people. And, uh, uh, we hope that, uh, we would have more stability in the city hall. We'll do our best to, uh, um, deal with the current issues in the city hall, like I said, uh, in a legal way. Uh, and we will try to make our city hall free of corruption and kias, and hostile and toxic environment. Um, that's our goal, and we will work toward that. I know I have only a few weeks left, uh, but I will continue to support the team, whoever is, uh, taken over, uh, from anywhere, um, I, I will, uh, end up in, you know, um, not sure where I will be next, but, uh, I will continue to utilize my skills, my time, and my relationships to serve this community. Um, and, uh, again, um, nothing more, I, I, I know it's been, uh, a while since we had the last meeting, but, uh, usually we have to report what activities we had over the past few weeks, but, uh, I can't remember, it's been a while. You know, the major event that I remember is the, uh, um, the election. On the personal level, I have a lot of, uh, maybe updates, but I prefer not to say now, and, uh, hopefully, the community will find out soon. Uh, and, uh, that, that's it for my report, and, uh, I will ask the mayor, Portem, to, uh, state his report, if he has any.
Thank you, Mayor, good afternoon, after your report, nothing else to say, you did everything forever. Uh, thank you people who come in here this evening, and people who are watching on the Facebook or live, or streaming. Uh, I'd like to thank you all those participants who participated in the election, November fourth. Uh, it is your intention to serve the community, and what's mine. And thank, again, thank you the winner, who won this election, and end of the day, who won the election, as a councilman, as a whole, I have to work with everybody's. The people who support me, vote for me or not, I'm elected, uh, my door is open for them, I like to support, I like to work for each and every individual, doesn't matter who is from, and what part of the city he lives in, what corner of the city he lives in, I'm liable to serve him, serve those people. And after, after November fourth, there are tons going on, a lot of chaos going on, we are not ready for those. But intentionally, or lack of our job, we made some mistakes behind, from the city hall, and for the community, especially on our beloved two community, put together face to face. We don't wanna, we don't wanna like that, we are really, really cool each other, and, and inshallah, after everything settled down, we get off, we find our mistakes, we fix our mistakes, and we move forward as a whole community. It doesn't matter where my origin, where is your origin or the money is, we are here for, serve the community. Uh, inshallah, everything resolve properly, and in the closing, we make some decision, city manager and our law firm, they take the action, proper action. Uh, again, thank you very much, all the winners, and thank you everybody who's come to support us.
Thank you, and I think, uh, just before, uh, the, the city council report, I, I think there's something worth mentioning, uh, that we have one of the winners who is African-American, uh, for the first time in decades, and I, I think, uh, we should celebrate that, to show that, uh, our community is diverse, and we don't discriminate against anyone. Uh, we don't have that many African-American in, in our city, but this guy got one of the highest numbers. So that's something that, uh, represent the values of our community, and we should, uh, celebrate diversity and hope that we can make this city council more diverse in future elections. So, uh, thank you, um, city council report, uh, Dohad, Mr. Hassan.
Okay, Mr. Chair and my all the friends, so after my post, what I have done, uh, please, I have to say, because some of the mayor can read telling, I'm gonna bring the water, build down tracks, down this and that, so it is related to that, then I did the explanation, mayor is the guardian of us, advisor of us, beauty of our city and council, and an elder brother, so, and try breaker. The council members has to do all the job, and brings that to the council, and, and, and then we are disagree, mayor always come, talk to us, compromise, and he.
But keep in mind, no mayor would be as good as them.
I forget you.
Yes, I am a hundred percent agree with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Musa is my best friend.
Thank you. Um any more council members report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, audience. Uh thank you all of journalists. Thank you all those Hamtramck citizens who showed up and voted for all of us. I appreciate your participation. You make us who we are. And I appreciate all those over two thousand people that have supported me, put their trust on me. Because I believe in unity over division, progress over politics. And my vision was, uh you know, appreciated from the community. And this is how I get onto this amount of vote. I know election result is final, but it's not final to me. It's still, uh you know, have to look into some areas. So I can congratulate uh winning candidate yet, but I congratulate all the council who won the election. I appreciate your dedication and hard work for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. And we have to mention the incredible work that you have done in your campaign. I mean, I have not seen um someone who can uh bridge that wide gap between the primary and the final election, uh you know, as good as you did. You went up almost nine hundred votes from the primary to the general election. That's impressive. Uh while your opponent only went up for by like fifty vote or so from the primary. That's that uh that's something impressive that I haven't seen in in previous elections.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna take thirty seconds. That's credit, that'll go to me only. It goes to my campaign workers with knocking the door and you know, asking people for their support. And I put all my hard work to this campaign. I was out there from uh eleven AM to sometime midnight. Because people coming in different uh timing from their work, so I make sure I catch everyone. So there is uh nothing beside this. I put effort to this campaign. Uh I and I I was able to earn people trust and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. But it's still, I think my my campaign was more impressive than all of you.
Yes.
I won by three thousand four hundred votes. That's seventy percent. Again, it's an incumbent mayor. So that was, yes, yes.
I declared you're winning like around one o'clock. But the Muhyid Mahmud, Mr. Adam makes me calculation, makes me calculation every day. But my calculation came very close. I tell five foot, calculation came six, sixty-eight, sixty-three is sixty-two and sixty-eight.
You put three possibilities.
Yes, fast for senior you.
Why never mention who is gonna win?
I'm not gonna say that. And fast senior you hit it, like yeah.
All right. Thanks so much. Any more report?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh thank you everyone for joining us tonight. Congratulations to all the winners. Uh we look forward to move the Hamtramck forward and I better place for all of us as a team. And um thank you.
Thank you. Any more report?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Sumeri, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for everyone today. They came this meeting. I like congratulations the people, the winner, mayor and council. And hot luck the people is now owner. And thank you.
Thank you. With that, we come to the end of our session for tonight. And we thank you all for joining us. Uh oh, yeah, we have second round public talk. Sorry. Go ahead, Omar.
No problem. Um first up, we got Dr. Alam.
Good evening. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
I want to say a few words. That is, I want to be speaking truth. Even though we stand as a community, sometimes we have jealousy. Uh openly, I didn't support Muhyid, but but I wanted wholeheartedly Muhyid would be the mayor. I did not see it during the candidate, during the election, not a single time with Muhyid or Adam. But uh I want to add this question to the city attorney. What is the voting threshold for automatic recount for the charter?
I'm not sure, but I can look it up.
Thank you. And number two, that the community we are standing at right now is just, is a position. And we we face off, like call on duty. Uh but I will tell Mr. Muhyid Mahmud, you know, please do a recount. He are forty hours. Uh Abu Hamid Musa, congratulations. Thank you so much. Naim Choudhuri got elected. Congratulations, Naim Choudhuri, I'm not forced. Yusuf Said, congratulations. This community, if Said did not speak Arabic, he wouldn't make it. I'm sorry. If he didn't speak Arabic, he wouldn't make it. Uh this this community is a small community. And we need to treat this community as our home. Uh Adam was the winner at the beginning. We heard about eleven vote, then jumped into the hoop that bring a lawsuit. Rookie, naive, like inconsistent, I want recount. Make sure Adam, you come and say he won't recount. I know the day of the, you know, that canvassers, I need extra minute, please, thank you. The day of the canvassers, we talked about thirty-seven vote. This community still we are learning and we're going through our processes and it's a community of struggle. We have language issue. We don't understand lot of rules, regulations. We don't understand the norm. Our people came out and voted. That vote and those voters done nothing wrong. And they conveyed their vote and they delivered that to the right point that was allocated. Whether that thirty-seven vote was opened, broken the chain of custody, or whatever it is, because that six vote is so tied, so you know, close to call. I will ask especially the candidate, Mr. Muhyid Mahmud, make sure if there's any legal action, you need to, you know, judge, read or whatever it is, make sure that thirty-seven vote you will stand for, that community, our uneducated community, they came out and voted. That should, vote should not be thrown away. Even though I may stood against those thirty-seven vote, but the outcome, I don't care at this point. It is Adam or Muhyid. One of you gonna be elected. But make sure you are steadfast in this politics. Steadfast in this progress, as you said, progress of politics. And my humble request, I want to know one thing, that when the city clerk is the election custodian, the day of the election, this lady, she came up, she snatched a candidate by the collar and said, you need to leave. We as a community, we don't tolerate that. And I told, I called out Rana, that Rana, you are wrong, you cannot do it. You need to stop it. And that candidate, I asked like, what if I was not here, what did you do? And that candidate said, I swear I was gonna leave. He opened the door, he was gonna leave. And I said, you will stop, you don't leave. So those type of thing need to be stopped. Even though a community, you are the custodian of election, you cannot touch a candidate, say you need to leave no matter what. Anyway, those are the thing need to be discussed. And so thank you for the minute.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, mayor, for your hard work and help. Of course, you are a great mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
The last one we got is M.A. Salam.
Sitting there, know him personally thirty-five years. Very awesome friend. Residents and all of the audience, thank you. My name is M.A. Salam Salim. I'm resident of Hamtramck City. I'm a citizen. I'm a voter. Been residing and living in the city last thirty-five years. I voted for the last election. First and foremost, Mr. Mayor, I just finished the election. I just want to congratulate the city council who got elected, especially Abu Hamid Musa, sitting next to you, serving as mayor of Portem. Congratulations, Mr. Abu Hamid Musa. You got re-elected again. Thank you. And I want to congratulate Abu Naim Choudhuri, who is not here. I think he got elected second time in the city. And I want to congratulate new elected Yusuf Said. He's also a very good friend of mine, African American. The city has proven, the citizen has proven the diversity. That's what we need in the city. Thank you, mayor. It has done because of you are here. And you got the courage. Thank you. Uh I'm here to say, stay, stay, I'm I'm standing here to say a couple of words or two, because I know meeting is ending. Uh I wanna, you know, take that much longer time. Everybody has to leave. Uh as long as I voted for the last election, I believe that everything else, ballot should need to be counted properly. But I'm here, I'm sorry, I cannot congratulate you, mayor, candidate. I don't know who is winning. Still, there's a tying position and there is a legal for the, you know, actions are serious issues going on. I don't exactly. But all I want to say, there is an issue about thirty-seven votes, you know. And here is my candidate, Muhyid Mahmud. I did support him. I supported you. I'm still supporting you and I will support you. Thank you. As we know, as the whole city knows, there is an issue for thirty-seven votes. Being as a voter, I will ask you, you should go for a recount procedure, whatever it takes you to go there. If there is any issues and isn't as for legal actions, you should go for it. And I will continue to support you. And the whole community will support you to win. Being as a mayor.
Thank you.
That's my final word. You should not stop. You should go for it until it is end and get the good result for the community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I want to address one thing. Mr. Salam, my friend, you like Mr. Abu Musa very much. I know that. But you mentioned the Abu Naim Soduri. The correction is Naim Leon Choudhuri. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. And he's always correcting the whole community. And he's a very old friend of mine. I got to say a couple of words about Hassan. He's a good man. He's all councilman. He's a very nice man. He's trying to serve the community as much as he can. And thank you very much, Mr. Hassan, for correcting me. I wish you all the best. And hopefully, I heard a lot of issues and agenda from the community, especially from the diversity, my young friends and families and communities, they are bringing a lot of issues about you. It's really shame for us, being as a Bangladeshi, because you are part of Bangladeshi too. Uh to be corrected yourself, be careful. And I don't want to hear any issues and agenda is really insulting me as long as I'm attending this meeting. So please correct yourself and thank you.
I'm glad you don't say the old man. You say all councilmen. I'm not old man and thank you.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. We have two more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh but I met him.
Yes, second round. I just want to clarify something. Abu Ali mentioned that Councilman Hassan said something on Facebook. And I I've known Hassan for going on twenty-three years. I ran his campaigns and especially in two thousand eight when he ran. And I want everyone to know, the majority Muslim council was done because of Councilman Hassan. Ghazali was elected because of Councilman Hassan. Most of the council, eighty-five percent of the council members that got elected since two thousand five till today, it's because of Councilman Hassan. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last one we have is Dr. Alam.
Sorry, thank you so much. I have just one question. I forgot I was excited. The city manager position was open, the last council meeting. That uh that employment was never updated in the computer. It was never updated in the website. Did the city manager post came on the public? I was looking to, you know, apply for myself.
It's still up on the MML.
I was not able to locate it. Is it still open?
It's still up right now until December ten.
So it's not on the city side?
I'm not sure. It's on the MML until December ten.
But you can you can apply city side too, even though it's not there. Any job you apply.
So I guess it's applicable.
Because I did not see that position itself in the city. I was looking for city of Hamtramck. Every side, I went there.
Okay, okay.
Okay. But put in the city side, please, if it in the city side. It's not there. It's not in the city.
It got taken down today in the afternoon on the city side, but it's still on the MML, but it's not on the site.
I I I was not familiar with the MML page.
Just click there.
I understand, but on the city council page.
We'll make sure if it's not on there, it's there's something that is, but if it's not.
And I am interested to put my position for the city, you know, manager. That's what I'm looking for.
Okay. Thank you. Any more?
We do. We got one more. Abdallah Aziz, go by.
Uh hello, everyone, again. Uh I don't want to repeat what I said before, but I want to thank the honorable mayor for what he said about our community, even if he gonna keep his eye on what's going on in the city and help the city official to run everything the way it's supposed to. That's one. And another one, I want to say that uh we are here to help each other. And communicate between the people who in the office and the community. Otherwise, everything will split. And has a different uh meaning for for uh before you guys sit in all this chair here. I I I'm here more than thirty-five years. Used to be all white people here. Remember, one day, you're not gonna be here. So the history repeat itself. And if you're not gonna do the right thing for the community, you will be marked for good or bad. Because this is my my thought. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just to answer your question, so um only statewide races have a threshold for automatic recount. Unfortunately, city cases don't. So it's just the rules of, which was mentioned that the campaign would have to request one and pay for it unless he won, in which case it would be.
So none of the city has any automatic recount?
Only statewide races.
Unless he wins the recount and that did get.
Yeah, for this.
Thank you.
You're done?
Yep.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone. Uh we come to the end of this meeting and we move to adjourn. Can I have a motion?
I'm wishing for adjourn.
Again, an all in favor?
Aye.
All right, eighteen-three now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Omar. You did a very good job. Thank you.
This is my family, me and my.
That's the way it's supposed to be, clerical job.